Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I am Laura Cletus, one of your facilitators for the Sarah Stevenson Choose Support along with Winston Robinson, who is our youngest facilitator, Serita Sherrill, who is one of our facilitators, Natalie McGara, and of course Steve Johnson, who does the technology for us, and Jackie Edwards, who is also one of our facilitators. And those that are not here right now are Mary Johnson and Aric Canty. We'd like to start off with a word of prayers in case Serita can be with us.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Come on and pray with me for a moment. Dear Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for everything this morning. We're thankful today for our lives. We thank you for our health and our strength. Thank you for blessing us with another beautiful Tuesday morning, the 27th September, 2022. Bless this forum today so that someone, it's possible that someone can get some information that they would not get otherwise from the other source. Bless our Sarah Stevenson, please. Bless our children every place, all over the world. Bless our nation, our state, our county, our city, our neighborhoods. All of these blessings, we ask in the name of Jesus' name, let us say together. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, I also failed to mention, we have Rashid Sattler, who is our youngest person that has joined us this morning, and he'll be working with Steve as he would with the technology for Choose Support. And for those that are here for the first time, do we have anyone that's part of you that's here for the first time? If you'd like to stand in that position.
Hello, guys. My name is Tridisha. I am a reporter with Channel 36. I know we get a lot of emails from you guys, so I just decided to pop in, see if I can write down some information. I think it's important going on in the community, that I can take back the station or something, I can dig a little deeper into or get out of the city. So, yeah.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome for coming.
And come back to see you. Just as information, particularly for the new person here this morning, we have people that will be coming in. We start at 8:30, and they may, they will come in respectfully and leave respectfully. So, we don't know, once we send the information out about who the speakers will be, how many people will show up. But we have found that people are coming in as we go through the campaign, and the election is coming to us in November 8th. So, we'd like to ask that everybody respect each other, and we do have a set of rules. And you know, you have an audience, not only in here, but this has been livestreamed, and it's been shared through Facebook as well. So, and you can always go back and review through our website for Sarah Stevenson's Choose Support. And just an update on Sarah. Sarah is doing fine. She told me to tell everybody that she loves, and she just appreciates us continuing to keep what we're doing here. But of course, this morning, we'd like to make sure that you clearly understand how we operate, and it's nothing any different than it has been before. I know Pat Lee and Arthur familiar with our process, because they're here, and they've been in Choose Support for years and years, as not as long as I've been here anyway, Tuesday Morning Forum. But we'd like to make sure that you understand that we would allow you, and since it's only five of you here, and I think that you are the only ones that are going to be here this morning, we would give you two minutes to present. And after your two minutes of presentations, what we would do, and sometimes we get questions that are sent in through our texts or through our texts to ask you questions there too. But we recognize, we facilitate the question and answer session for the people that are sitting here, and also if we get information on our text to ask you questions. So, we give you two minutes to do a presentation. Once each one of you do a presentation, and keep in mind, we do not debate at all. The person, our audience will be, or our attendees will have an opportunity to ask a question, some may get some commentary, but they have a minute to do that, and you have a couple of minutes to give an answer, unless we change that. Now, Natalie is our timekeeper, and please pay attention to her, because she will let you know. Thirty seconds before your time is up, she will hold up that card, and when your time is up, please respect her and bring her to a close. So, with that being said, we'd like, I'd like for you to start on that probably, and as the questions are being asked, we ask the people that are on here to direct it to individuals, if they choose to do so, but also if they want you, everyone, to answer the question that they ask, they would direct you in that manner if they. So, without any further ado, we're going to start with Lee, with an introduction, and just once again, thank you all for being here and participating with the Choose Support this morning.
Thank you. And do we not, oh, may I have that?
Of course.
Is it working?
Don't let it scare you, because their microphones are on, and it does pick up. We like to use those, but sometimes they won't work. So, if it's not working...
It doesn't sound like it's working.
Just the green light on.
Green light on. There you go.
I think it's working. Good morning, Tuesday Morning Forum. Good morning, Tuesday Morning Forum. My name is Commissioner Lee Altman. It is so great to be back here in person with all of you. It's truly a delight and a pleasure. A lot of us go back a ways, but for those who don't know me, I am a lifelong Democrat. I'm a CMS parent. I spent a 17-year career as a public interest lawyer, fighting for families, specifically with a focus on consumer protection and fair housing. When I came to Charlotte, I became a guardian advocate to seniors and adults with disabilities, and my last legal position was as a staff attorney at the Council for Children's Rights by representing At Risk Kids. It was because of my work as a lawyer, feeling like I just wasn't really able to move the needle in the kinds of ways that would really transform people's lives, that I first decided to run for the Board of County Commissioners, which, as you all know, oversees a $2.1 billion budget for human services, public health, mental health, education, welfare, and the environment. That's why it means so much to me, and that's why I ran in my first term. And in the time that I've been on the Board of County Commissioners, we've worked really hard. We passed a comprehensive non-discrimination ordinance with the support of all my colleagues. We've invested, we just voted to pass $15 million to get more free space for our community. We are launching an initiative around environmental justice. We seek to do equity in everything we do. We use that lens for every single vote we take, because we know that there are great disparities in every single metric across this county, and that's something that I'm deeply committed to, and I look forward to going into deeper detail as we go through the forum this morning. So, good morning again, and thank you so much. My name is Lee Altman.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Fatianna Solim, and I am running for the Board of Commissioners at large.
You want to talk to us a little bit about?
Yes. Yeah, I'm just trying. I think I'm going to do fine without the microphone.
You could be heard without that, but there are lines throughout the room.
A little bit about myself. It is my first time I am running. I was born and raised in Kiev in Soviet Ukraine. I am the first Ukrainian-born immigrant woman that runs in North Carolina ever, and the only one in state right now. And what made me to decide to run? I hold Master of Science. I also am a recipient of certificate in recognition for excellent teaching from NC State Appalachian. I'm a journalist, and I am decisively engaged in a community. I established Slavic International Festival that we did conduct with International House in Opera Carolina, and I'm also a 10-years member of Opera Carolina, and right now I am a member of Opera Guild, nonprofit, a fundraising chair. Why? Because I am deeply advocating for the excellence in education, and also I believe that art and culture are spinal for any society. And I see that here right now, we see some decline in art and culture in this country, and that but hurts me personally, because I see how difficult it is for organizations such as Opera Carolina, such as Symphony, to survive, especially after COVID environment. Also, I am very concerned about property taxes, about a revaluation that was done in 2019, too early, I think, and also about the education level and performance level in our schools. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And very much thank you to Sarah Stevenson. I am honored and privileged to be here and invited here. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Pat Coffam, County Commissioner at Large since 2012. Prior to being on the county commission, and what motivated me to run was I had been working, well, for several years right before, I had been working just right down the street, in fact, at a nonprofit called the Center for Community Transitions, where I was helping people who had been in prison find employment. Now, that was totally new for me. I had been a successful recruiter, but I saw the obstacles that people faced over and over again, and that motivated me to run for county commission, because every day I was sitting with someone who had a mental health problem, or someone who had a drug addiction, or they weren't able to get any help from the state. So many men do not have opportunities to get food stamps, and so that I saw homelessness, so that's what motivated me. And while I've been on the board, that has continued to be something that is important to me. But I've certainly gotten into many other issues over the years. As for having my platform, my platform is whatever the people want, the people's platform, and I stay very close to the people. I am very visible in the community. Since I'm at large, I mean, I have a large, we have a lot of geography to cover, so I'm in North Mecklenburg a couple of times a week. I'm in South Mecklenburg. I'm all over the place, and I listen to the people. People tell me they vote for me, and then I say, "Why do you vote for me?" And they say, "Well, you're common sense, and I see you around, and you stand up for people. You're not afraid to stand up." And that's pretty much who I am. I am not afraid to stand up, and I will continue to fight for the people and do what's right. Thank you. I'm Pat Coffam, County Commissioner at Large. I'm asking for one of your three votes.
Good morning. My name is Arthur Griffin, and I'm a candidate for an at-large seat on the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commission. I'm running because there are way too many of our children and our families living on the outskirts of hope. I want to make up mobility a reality rather than a political slogan, and bring some of those children and families back into communities of opportunity and communities of hope. There are four areas that I think are critical in doing that. One is educational attainment. Clearly, we have to start graduating kids college-ready or career-ready. I serve as a trustee at Central Pima Community College, and that's a wonderful workforce development institution. We're not doing as much as we can, because we aren't getting students prepared to take advantage of the programs that are there. So, educational attainment is critical for me. As a cancer survivor, access to quality healthcare is absolutely critical. You may or may not know it, but African-Americans lead the pack when it comes to premature deaths in Mecklenburg County. And you define premature deaths as dying before age 65. It's a lot of grandparents, aunts, and uncles that are leaving too soon. Affordable housing, I've worked 20 years at Legal Aid Society. We changed the law so at least the county can talk about affordable housing. Affordable housing is clearly in the purview of the city of Charlotte, but the county can't do some things, but we need to do more. The next area is economic development. Clearly, MWE can be improved, but look at the wealth in this community. We're still on the bottom. Read the latest Federal Reserve report, African-Americans' wealth gap is even below its span. So, I think we can do better for the entire community. This is home for me. I'm a native Charletoan, and I look forward to your questions as we continue. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name's Ross Monks. I'm running for county commission in District One. Thank you for the opportunity to get together and meet today. In the brief time I've got, I'm new to politics, so I should probably introduce myself and then tell you what I intend to do when elected. So, who am I? Well, I'm a husband of 32 years. I'm a father of three. I'm a grandfather of four. I'm a former U.S. Army officer, veteran of the First Gulf War, spent 30 years in Fortune 100 companies in the industrial services and manufacturing sectors, and during that time was predominantly operations management, labor relations, and employee engagement. I retired two years ago, and I took the experiences from the military and the civilian sector into retirement and decided to apply it here in the county commission. And the biggest lesson I got out of those 34, 35 years of experience is servant leadership. Bottom line, as a leader, you need to go out to where the work is being done and listen to the folks who are doing the work, because invariably they've got the keys to the solution of the challenges. All they need from their leadership is to facilitate those solutions. So, I've knocked on over 4,000 doors so far in my campaign, and here's what I'm hearing from the folks. They're concerned about schools. As Arthur mentioned, our schools are failing. We're not preparing our children for careers, and quite frankly, even to read at a third grade level. They're concerned about the cost of living. They're concerned about inflation, decrease in real wages, and a lack of affordable housing. They're concerned about safety, and they're concerned about the mental health, particularly of our youth and our veterans. So, when elected, I intend to apply that servant leadership to facilitate the problems, facilitate solutions to the problems that I hear folks are concerned about. So, again, Ross Monks, County Commission, District One. Thank you for the opportunity to meet you all today.
Okay, our first question, tell me, Ross.
Yeah. I found that in America, like, a lot of Americans don't travel. We have one of the worst healthcare systems in the world, and we are claiming it's one of the best. So, is anything the county commission, county commission can do about the healthcare system in America? You go to an emergency room, you sit for hours and hours, waiting on P.O. for a code. So, is there anything, can anything be done about the healthcare system?
I'm happy. I'm happy to go. I'm happy to go.
Let's start with, let's start with you first. Ross.
So, the healthcare situation is not just a county issue, as you mentioned. It is, it's a nationwide issue. What can we do here locally? Well, I would like to see our Health Department, which we, as one of only two counties in the state of North Carolina, as county commissioners, we would also sit on the Health Board as well. I would like to see our Health Department focus more on mental health. I'm very concerned about our children and our veterans, right? So, I think over the past two years, we've put our children through a lot, whether it's been keeping them away from their friends, whether it's been forcing them to be on computer screens, whether it has been locking them inside their houses. I would like to see our Health Department focus more on the mental health of our children. And then also, as a veteran, I'm concerned, there are at any time dozens to several hundred veterans homeless on the street, and I'd like to see our Health Department focused more on that.
Yeah, as a, the Board of County Commissioners sits as a solidated human services board. They're responsible for the Department of Social Services as well as the public health. There are two approaches I would take, particularly being sensitive to the access to quality healthcare as a former cancer survivor. Two is prevention and wellness. We do, we can do better, much better, moving out towards the community. For example, we use data all kinds of ways. We can take a census tract without violating HIPAA laws and look at census tracts where there's high blood pressure, there's hypertension, there's diabetes, etc. All of those would prelude to serious health conditions and premature deaths. We can go to the community and have services closer to the community, in addition to quality services once you get to the hospital. But please keep in mind, although ATRIM is called Atrium, the real name for ATRIM is Charlotte Mecklenburg Hospital Authority. They're part of this community. They started as part of this community. We can partner in different ways with the health delivery system to make sure prevention and wellness is closer to the community, as well as making sure people can get quality health when they get to the, for the hospital. I'll revert back to growing up in Charlotte, going to the colored library. Elektra Westbrook used to take old rusty bus and drive out in the neighborhoods to make sure kids had access to buses. We can make sure healthcare is closer to the people, to make sure that prevention and wellness is there, as well as making sure that the delivery of quality health services, once you get to a facility, is first class. And that's my focus and one of the key factors in making sure people don't slip through the cracks as they move towards upward mobility and trying to find greater hope and greater opportunities in the community.
Thank you for your question. It immediately made me start boiling. We have an outstanding healthcare system if you are rich. So, let's just be clear about that. One thing that we need to do more of, we do not, I think, have a strong as of advocacy with the legislature, and Medicaid expansion would help tremendously. I personally know many, many people who have passed away, young people, African-Americans, because they were diluting their medicine, diluting, cutting their pills in half. That would help if we can make a stronger force to explain that to people. That would help. Plus, it would help with an enormous amount of jobs. We have done some great things at the county, which we probably should expand. The program that we had, the Village Heartbeat, has had tremendous results, and that focused on the Crescent area of Charlotte, which included many African-American churches. I have been to those events multiple times, and they are educating and really reducing high blood pressure, cholesterol, which is what Arthur was talking about in prevention. They have talked about, and we have talked about wanting to expand that to children, so that, because if you, if you ever go to a school, you see that there's a lot of children who don't look healthy. They're overweight, and there's better things we can do. We have also expanded our markets for fresh produce. We can do more of that. You know, there's, I had two people call me yesterday that are struggling with food, and they don't have food stamps. And we do have food pantries around, but we need, we don't, we don't do as good a job as I would like to educate, to let people know where things are and how they can get access to it. And I think that we also should do, we've helped a lot of the clinics, like CW Williams, but there's, there's just so much more needed. There's so much more that's needed. And I'm, this is something I've worked on. As for mental health, the state took that away in 2013, because before that we had MECLIC, but they took that away. So, we can only do, I think we spent about $20 million on that. And we also, now the county pays for the nurses at the schools, and we pay for the counselors and the psychologists, but certain, and also mental health at the jail. We've made, and the sheriff has done a good job over there, but we've always had programs there. But we need to expand that. We need to expand them, so that would benefit the community. I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you again for your question. And you started with that Americans don't travel much. So, I came from Eastern Europe, and it did surprise me when I got here that there is no paid leave for pregnant women, no paid leave enough for young mothers. That really surprised me, and I find it that, again, like Pat said, on the legislative level, I am a strong advocate for those programs that should support families, and that's where health starts, with families. When, when we talk about mental health, it also, the root is in the family. If, if we have psychologists, and I'm a mother of four children, two of them graduated here from the CMS schools, and I've noticed that, yes, there are psychologists there, there are consultants there, but they should be working more close with families and parents to create that unit, that because parents are, well, at least most of them, I would hope, genuinely are concerned about children. So, they should be a part of the solution, because if children have a strong support in the family, at home, they will be healthier in a society. That is my strong belief. That's how I raise my children. They all are responsible citizens today, working and trying to be dignified members of a society. However, I would like to mention that the private insurances in the United States are out of this world. Our deductible, my husband works for Duke, our deductible is $13,000 out of pocket, Duke Energy. So, if there's anything that we can do in the county commission to fix that, believe me, I would love that, most definitely. So, I'm all for people here. The healthcare should be nondiscriminatory, English second language, and affordable and available for all the citizens of the United States and all the constituents. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, it's a great question. One of the many reasons I am a proud Democrat, a lifelong Democrat, is because of the commitment of our party, our recognition, that we have to get to universal access to healthcare. We, at the county level, can never fill the gap that the failure of the national and state lawmakers to deliver universal access, we can't ever, up here, because the numbers are too big. It would just blow the hole out of everything the county has to do, from clean air to clean water to the education. You know what I mean? So, what we do here in Mecklenburg County is try to use the dollars we have to do the most good. And in that regard, I feel like Mecklenburg County is really doing a lot of great work. Like, our Department of Public Health knocked it out of the park. I mean, nobody gets anything right all the time, but public health, I mean, Dr. Reynard Washington, if you don't know him, follow him on Twitter. He's incredible. You know, in fact, we just had a briefing yesterday about West Nile in Mecklenburg County, Monkey Pox in Mecklenburg County, and COVID in Mecklenburg County. I just went to the Department of Public Health last week, got my COVID booster. It was an amazing experience. I recommend it to everybody to get your bivalent, to be protected for the fall. But, yeah, we have to get first and foremost Medicaid expansion in North Carolina. That will immediately cover like 600,000 people out of the gate, and that's something that, as a county commissioner, I very much support. Our legislative, our lobbyists, we have a county lobbyist trying to help to get that passed at the state level. So, we need Medicaid expansion, and while we work to get the kind of real coverage that we can only, that will really, that we need from the state and federal government. In Mecklenburg County, we make important investments to address disparities in primary care. For example, we're working against disparate outcomes in maternal fetal healthcare. We're investing in community health workers who go out and into the community where there are great disparities to try to help close those gaps. We do invest in health organizations that... We do invest in health organizations that provide no cost or sliding fee services. So that's very important. Village Heartbeat that Commissioner Coffin mentioned. And so I think that we're definitely on the right track, and I will continue to do everything that I can to advocate for expanded access to primary care in Mecklenburg County. But just know that we're never going to get there if we don't have state and federal lawmakers who make it so.
Okay. Thank you. Next question is from Jackie.
Good morning. Thank you so much for coming. I wanted to ask regarding persons who were in tent city and the community support department. What do you know is being done for them to move forward? I understand the horrible housing, but what's being hap, what is happening with those folks?
Okay, we'll start with Arthur.
Yeah, I can only tell you what I've read, and that is that the county has a program called HOMES that's focused on trying to work with the homeless population. I'm not familiar with the data in terms of the tent city that was removed some time ago in terms of what's happened with those individuals. But clearly, within the capacity of the Department of Social Services and with Human Services, with the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commissioners, we ought to be able to figure out how to help those that we possibly can help move out of, probably move out of that homeless situation into stable housing, and then from stable housing into proper healthcare. And then in terms of workforce training, to be able to provide some sense of self-sufficiency to move themselves out of their predicament. As, as a veteran, I do know that there are far too many veterans that are on the street that we need to provide additional services for, both at the local, state, and federal level. And I'll be focused on trying to make that happen. One thing that I'd like to say for, for, for all of my, my comments is, I will wear a scoreboard over my head in terms of the condition that we find people in once I'm elected to the Board of County Commission. And I want you to hold me accountable to reduce those inequities and disparities in each of those areas that we are responsible for, whether it's health disparities, whether it's homeless. I will, I will benchmark where we are at that point, and then hold me accountable for reducing those to the extent that we can as county commissioners.
Oh, thank you. Certainly, the tent city was a, a learning experience for our whole community with my COVID was in the early stages. And I thought it was a good barometer of seriousness of homelessness. And I had been probably on the county commission the most involved in homelessness. The good things that came out of it that we saw were so many people in our community were so concerned. A lot of them were mad, but mad is good, because that means they care. And it was tremendous, the amount of support that, that came to those people. Part of the problem was it wasn't an organized support. So we had people dropping off a lot of food at the wrong time, when we were already giving food, and then we ended up having a rat problem that caused a health problem. So those are things that we learned. Now, all of this was organized during a crisis, emergency management, not the county commission. Emergency management, you know, coordinates this. But so there was a lot of value of lessons out there. To answer your question, we have kept data on the people who were there, and we, we spent tens of millions of dollars on hotels to, you know, put them in. And then we also had wonderful nonprofits like Promise Resource Network, which is one of my favorite ones. And they focus on mental health and addiction. And they are a national, nationally known nonprofit. So they were in the hotels, as well as we had Block Love. We had, so we had these wonderful nonprofits that were helping with that. And we did a lot of good, and we did it much better in organizing the support from the community. So we weren't wasting dollars, which had been in the beginning. And we also had organ, I went to a lot of organized food distribution. So it, it was, and we had, so had dignity is something that is very important. And so we, we did have showers and laundry facilities available for them, and we had mobile units. And I pushed early on to not just have more porta potties, but also hand washing attached to it. And so that was helpful. You know, could we have done better? Yes. We have, we have maintained a track of many of those people, and the nonprofits have. But I can tell you about homelessness. There are some people, you can put them in a place to live, and bless their heart, two weeks later, they're on the street again. This is mainly because of the mental health problem. So they're not all people who can get a job and can keep a job and can stay in a place. I would say to my veteran candidates here, the county has done a wonderful job. That was the first focus we had with homelessness, was veterans. And we did an enormous, we did a wonderful job making a, a big turn. So we, we have certainly improved that. That was our first focus to get housing for veterans. And we worked in conjunction with many of the veterans organizations in towns. And so that, is it perfect? No, but we, we certainly made a dent, but there's always more veterans that come every day. But I'm very proud of the work that we have done for veterans. Homelessness is, is tragic, and it's certainly nationwide. And it's, but, and it certainly indicates other problems. I often, when I'm out, like I was out last, a few days ago uptown at night, and I often asked the question, how do you, how did you get here? And my time is up, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. When I first got on the Board of County Commissioners, it was very important to me that we addressed the problem of access to mental health here. Cardinal Health is responsible for providing, was at the time responsible for providing services to people who were on Medicaid, people with the most complex behavioral health issues. And I fought very hard for us to fire them, because we knew they had a history of delaying and denying coverage. And so I'm very happy that that occurred, and we have now entered into an agreement, a contract with Alliance Health, and the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners appointed me, along with the county manager and Assistant County Manager Anthony Trotman, to sit on that board to oversee what they're doing for this community. And so that's very important to me, because yes, access to mental health is key to helping to address the humanitarian crisis of people who are unsheltered. I recently went to The Rise, which is a new facility that was built by Roof Above and wonderful community partners. And let me just say, because I know we're short of time, that I was so impressed. They took a, a, a small hotel that was, you know, like a, like a Quality Inn or something, and they refurbished it, and it's absolutely gorgeous. These are studio apartments, but each little, each space has its private bed, its private sitting area, a small kitchenette, and a bathroom, and a shower. And that's, you know, just an incredible model that I hope the county will be able to invest in and replicate, because it has so much dignity, it's safe. And, you know, we all know that Housing First is the motto. We have to first get people stabilized with housing so that we can then address all their other needs, from workforce to, to health. So that's something I'm really focused on.
Sure, thank you. So listening to the comments of the other panelists, a couple concepts leapt out at me. So Pat said, were we perfect? No. We're never perfect, right? But what we can do is learn through trial and error. So I think the experiences we've just gone through in the last two years have provided a great foundation of experience that we can continue to get better. And, and that's, that's fantastic. I think another thing we can do is we can, as county commissioners, coordinate all the different resources there are. So you heard all the panelists talking about not-for-profits, or state resources, or federal resources. I, I think that becomes our mission, is to try to channel and coordinate all of those resources using the continuous improvement, learning from trial and error, to get better at this. And fundamentally, as Pat mentioned, if you talk to folks who are homeless, a large number, the number of them are suffering from mental illness. And we've really, really got to focus on the mental health of the folks on the street, whether they be veterans, whether they be anybody, and address that core problem. And once we do that, I think we'll see a change. So continuous improvement, coordination of resources.
Thank you. I do not have a lot of experience in addressing the homelessness. However, I serve also on the Charlotte Community Relationship Committee, and I am on the subcommittee on house, fair housing and economic crisis. And we do think a lot about how to, what to implement, what new strategies to find along with those that exist today. And again, I come from, from the part of the world where homelessness did not exist for various reasons. And it's, again, just historically so. And I believe that I'm still learning what are the reasons and roots for such a huge appearance of homelessness here. And I believe that actually working with nonprofits like Charlotte Community Relationship Committee does work with a variety of nonprofits, and Promise Resources is one of them. And it's an amazing nonprofit that addresses this problem. Again, number one problem is mental health, because the perpetual homelessness only is rooted in just the internal not believing in yourself that comes from those that find themselves on the street. They just, they just need help. And they need help not just realizing that they can be dignified members of society, but they first have to be sheltered, they have to be provided maximum of help, so they feel safe, they feel that they are not outcasts, but they are included in a society, they are included in the community, and they are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, please, next question.
Sure. It was, I think it was more of a comment. I've heard a lot of this, I'm a Kim Best Superior Court Judge and candidate for Superior Court Judge. When I was a district court judge, I previously presided over Wellness Court, what we call Mental Health Court, and Promise Resource Network was one of ours. But I would encourage everyone to do, because there's been a lot of discussion concerning veterans and mental health, is to speak with Judge, retired Judge Donnie Hoover, who tried to start a veterans' court. So we were able, he was able to get the VA involved, but I believe there may have been, I don't want to misspeak. Our Wellness Courts, our Drug Courts, what we call Step Courts, are headed by the Criminal Justice Services, which is headed by the county commissioner. And my understanding from Judge Hoover is that there may have been some disinterests because of capacity, because of lack of funding. So I would just encourage you all to speak with Judge Hoover, because we could have been, Mecklenburg County could have been the first court system with a veterans' court. He did what he could, and then since fall and all. And that's really just a comment to let the commissioners know.
Thank you then. Or where's the candidates? Where's the next, next question?
Yes. Good morning. So throughout local government, there seems to be a lot of ambition, or a lot of ambitious initiatives and programs that are developed without strong sense of measurables, or we, we don't know where it ends, or how, how to gauge his success. And I wanted to know if elected or reelected, how would you ensure that whatever you endorse or bring in or attempt to promote would have those measurables? And if you see those lacking in other areas of the work for the county commission?
Okay, let's go south.
Okay. The result is everything. If you are engaged in whatever you commit to be engaged in, whether it is work, whether it is performance, whether it is teaching or writing an article, the outcome is the reception. So you learn from your mistakes, you learn from, from the reaction that comes from the audience, that comes from people, and you adjust yourself and you go ahead again. But the most important thing is to be a common sense person. We all have values, we all have our stance in our life, we all represent something, represent our values. And most of all, for me, it is the family, it is the success of my family, it is success of those that I am engaged with as a teacher, as a pedagogue, as a public figure and organizer. So taking that, you just aim for the success, you learn how to be successful in life by doing projects that are oriented on community and that do target the best for the community. Thank you.
So I, I'm going to steal one of Arthur's lines, right? So we need to have that sign over our head, that report card over our head. In manufacturing, we call that visual management. So every workstation in a visually managed factory would have a computer screen over the top of it, and it would tell you how that workstation was doing. And as soon as that flashed red, supervisor didn't come out to yell at the person, the supervisor came out to address what was a shortfall and ask how I, as the supervisor, could help you in your job. And so I think that's an absolutely necessary part of anything we do, is what are the metrics by which we are going to define success? So if we say we're gonna, we're gonna address, let's say, mental health, because we, we discussed that a lot this morning, I think we need to start with a number. What's the number of people currently homeless on the streets in Mecklenburg County today? What would we define as the criteria of success in a month, six months, and a year? And then we need to visually manage that so that the people of the county can see how we're doing on that. And whether that be publication through the Board of County Commissioners website, whether it be through publication on our own individual websites, we need to hold ourselves accountable. And if our screen goes red, then we have to ask for help. So 100% agree, that's the only way we're going to get things done, is with metrics.
Yeah, I'm, I'm back into, into this war, because for well over a decade now, we've been talking about upward mobility, and nobody can tell me what we're doing. I, I just think it's just horrible. So you can't get to all these nice terms and phrases of continuous improvement unless you know where you are and where you're going. And, and, and clearly, we have the intelligence, the wherewithal, the capacity to start looking at some of these problems. They're massive, but we start breaking them down and stop looking at them as individual transactions and start looking at them systemically. You know, we talked about veterans. I mean, there are a lot of veterans who are sick and couldn't get their veteran disability, and, you know, and so that mental illness just grew. So we know what to do, just aren't doing that as effectively as we could. So clearly, I think, we have to get a hold of where we're going, where we are, if we have any chance of trying to deal with continuous improvement. I'm all for having standards, and there's a phrase I use periodically called accountable governance. You know, we're not going to be perfect. We damn sure ought to be better than what we were last year. And each year, you, as taxpayers, we spend seventy-five, seventy-five cents out of, out of, out of all the money we spend comes from people like you and me through property taxes or sales taxes. So let's be effective and efficient with those resources and, and engage all the partners out there, private sector, public sector, nonprofit. But we all have to be productive, and I think we can make a huge dent in all of these other things that have been expressed earlier in terms of health, homelessness, and a lot of the human services, or just simply. and a lot of the human services or just simply the quality of life. We can improve the quality of life for our residents if we were smarter and more focused and have a commitment to serious outcomes.
Oh, thank you. And thank you for the question. I can't tell you from being on the board that we have a lot of data and a lot of accountability. We have it, but we don't get that from the county to the people. We need to do, I'm really excited to hear some candidates here talking more about this because a lot of times I felt like I've been the lone person pushing this probably. Now, there's a reporter here today. And anytime a reporter calls me, even if I don't want to talk to that reporter about that topic, I will always do it. And, and I talked to a reporter this morning. And because they, I'm doing my job by being accountable. And then they do their job by getting that message out. But a lot of elected officials are not available to the media. And I don't think the county does a good enough job in talking with the media. And yes, I'm prejudiced. I have a degree in journalism and I was glad to hear you have some journalism background. But we, we are all stronger together and the public has a lot of great ideas and they can also alert us of problems. So I, I really, I want you to know, we have a lot of data, but we keep it very quiet. And it's, it's hard to find. And, you know, being on our website, being on the website, I mean, the website is massive. It's hard to find. I mean, I, here's, I gave you an example. I had a church stegan call me and he wanted to know about what happens to the remains of deceased homeless people. Okay, I had no idea. And it took me a while to find the person at the county who handles that because they wanted to do something at their church to, you know, to give a respectful funeral or something. And we do have a memorial service once a year, but I did not really know that. But that information was available. So there's, there's a lot of things that we can do better. And communication is something back and forth. We need to communicate more with the people. We need to do surveys more than once a year. We need to do them, we need to talk to the media more. So there's, and, you know, I'm out on the street. I, I'm not in the government center. If you're looking for me, don't go to 600 East Fourth Street because I'm not there unless it's Tuesday. You know, look for me on Freedom Drive or, you know, the Stucka CG or whatever because that's where I am. So, and I talk to people all the time and say, you know, what's going on? I talked, also, we need to talk to not just adults, we need to talk to kids, young people. What's going on? What, what do you, you would be surprised what you would learn.
You're fascinating.
Absolutely.
I think the question.
You would be surprised how many people do not know at all what county commission does, period. Even a year and a half ago, I didn't know that this body exists.
How long have you been here?
For 11 years.
Thank you, ma'am. I think the question was, would you encourage measurables? And let me give you three examples of where measurables have come into play. COVID. We found that despite all of our best intentions, that initially there was great disproportionality in access to testing and access to vaccines. We measured that data, we published that data, and it didn't look good for us. But it was important to be transparent about it because we have to do better. And I think we learned a lot about it. A second example of measurables. Workforce development is a very important priority for me. We have a lot of people who are unemployed, underemployed, who are not making a family sustaining wage and all these businesses that can't fill their workforce. And so we put money in workforce development, but we're not making progress. So what we're doing now, because of the renewed focus we brought to this priority, is we are not going to fund any more workforce development programs that don't guarantee placement for the, the seats that we have funded because we are being more accountable to what we're investing and the outcome that we're getting. That's an example with workforce development. And then with pre-K, we are investing $23 million and trying to get to universal access to pre-K for all four-year-olds because every child needs to be able to enter kindergarten on an even playing field so they all have equal opportunity to, to learn and grow. But it's a large investment of money. It's your taxpayer dollars. So the county manager is going to be running those reports to see those children that we invested in, how are they doing in elementary, middle and high? How, how college and career ready do they end up being? So that we can really assess for how we are investing your money and the programs that, that, that we do. What I would say to you is, there are nine county commissioners. There are 5,000 county employees. So who's between the 5,000 employees and the nine of us? It's the county manager, Dina DiOrio. And I believe that she is very focused on metrics and accountability. And I will encourage, continue to encourage her to be so and hold her accountable for being so. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me remind you that if you have a question, please just have, just have that one question. And for those that are asked, listen to the question. And we like to get the answer to the question. The commentary is good, but we like to get the answer to the question. So please listen to the question and ask, and make sure you're answering the question. If you don't answer the question, this is the group that will come back and ask that question again, who will say to you that you didn't answer the question that was asked. So with that being said, our next question will come from Blanche. And then we have Tommy again. And Masista is in the back, will be after Tommy.
And then her saying that means that we do do that. I know y'all, I do know some of the things that y'all focus on, things of that nature. Back in 2018, I came down to the county commission with Lake Arbor. Everybody kept telling me, go back to city, go back here, go back there. So, and I didn't really actually focus on the homeless and things of that nature. I know human service. But my concern was now, and Pat, you did so well in explaining a lot of the stuff because it's still hard to find a lot of the things that we do need to find. So how can you make it even better where we can find exactly what the service you do? Because I'm going to still come back to the city or the county and talk about some things about what, and I'm going to be coming soon because there's a lot of problems going on, especially in the homeless area. And that's what I'm focusing on now. So I guess my question is, how can we do a better job? Like the other commissioners said too, and when we're going to do that better job?
Okay, we'll start, we'll start with Ross.
So, so I think the answer to the question is, we've got to get the end user of that website involved in the design of that website. So most for-profit organizations, their website is designed for the ease of the customer. I, I don't know that governmental websites are set up that way. I mean, I can tell you trying to go into the VA's website and trying to make an appointment. And I think I'm a pretty bright guy, but that, that takes some work, right? Because they're not designed with the end user in mind typically. So I don't know if we've ever called in folks from the community to just give feedback on the website and whether it does what they want it to do. And I think that would go a long way towards making that information more accessible.
Okay, talk to you.
Thank you for this question. I believe in order to do more in the area of homelessness, the current situation has to be evaluated. And then decisions got to be made. What's the strategy and tactics in finding solutions? So what I was personally thinking about are shelters that exist today. Are they up to date? Are they full? If they are full and underserved, then new shelters got to be there. What do we do for that? What kind of buildings can be used for that if there's not enough funding in building new ones? And I believe that such buildings as old schools that are not in use can be possibly used for that. But there has to be a collective understanding of what the situation is today. Then solutions and got to be implemented and funds got to be requested and directed to that direction. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, decentralization. The county, I believe, had started a process of creating what's called a community resource centers, centers that are closer to the folk. They have well over 300,000 people on Medicaid, almost 200,000 on food stamps. If we can figure out how to decentralize to a certain degree, get services closer to people, just having that access will improve the quality of those services that would help people address whether their health needs, whether it's human services needs in terms of various, whether it's food stamps, welfare, et cetera. But something is simply decentralizing in terms of your parks. I mean, just having services closer to the people so that people can more effectively and efficiently use those services would be one approach I would take.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. I think communicating with the public and trying to bring the county to you is a big part of my job. Throughout the pandemic, I covered every single press conference of the Public Health Director to, to summarize it and push it out because people don't have an hour to listen to that, even if it was very important information. And I continue to do an email once or twice a month, like not for campaigning, but to provide to you a quick summary of what's happening in the county. And if you'd like to be added, you can email me at voteleealtman@gmail.com. But that's, that's part of my job is to work hard to bring the county into the community. And, you know, I, I think another, another thing to, that's important when you, when you think about who to vote for, I answer my email quickly. I mean, I, I won't say it's, you know, 24 hours, but it's often within an hour and it's certainly in a short period of time if I don't get it that same day. You know, some people don't answer their email at all. They have someone else answer their email. And, you know, if you're here to serve the people, then serve the people. If someone calls you with a problem, you bird dog that till you find the answer for them. And, and I, maybe it's my history as a lawyer, but when someone comes to me with a problem, it's my job to help them resolve it. And that is my personal commitment to all 1.1 million residents of this county that I represent. So thank you.
I'm emailing to you.
Good.
Thank you. This is, this is complex. People, Ross, you made a good point talking about the website. But not everybody has internet access. And even if they did, they, they don't know how to do that. And we have to meet people where they are. And I have, I have talked before that we need a senior citizen phone line, someone trained, multiple people trained to talk to seniors. Maybe they don't hear as well or they might need not to use acronyms to be more explaining things to them. I, I think that would be helpful. I, I think also we need to work in partnership with the faith communities and push. I, I see Dr. Witherspoon is here, who's a candidate and he's with Steel Creek Ambeside. Is that right? Okay. And, but what, I think it would be helpful if we pushed information out to all of the faith communities, whether they, you know, it's a temple or a mosque or a church so that, because a lot of people go to church and they get information there. And we should meet people where they are. But I think we, we need to be more creative in how we get information out so that people know about the services that we have. And I, I have been frustrated over the years. I mean, you're asking us, what are we going to do? But, you know, it takes five votes to do about anything. And, and I, I believe that, you know, I always reject when people talk, and I was glad Judge Best asked that, answered that question. I did not know that about Judge Hoover, but he's, she said there was no funding. I would say there's no will. You have to have will to do things. There's funding. There's funding. But courage and will are sometimes short.
Thank you. The next person, person is Tommy. And we ask you to ask the question if you want to direct it to someone in particular, Tommy. We need to do that. And let's give them a minute to answer.
Yeah, my, my question is, do the county negotiate on, on projects or deals? Because I, I work at a nursing home. The minimum, it was a terrible nursing home. And the minimum, the county was paying $1,800 a month, this was back in the 70s, for a resident to stay in the nursing home. And I hear a lot of people escaped the rest home. You know, I told them they didn't have to stay there, which they don't, you know, it's law. They don't have to stay in the nursing home. But the county was paying, county, the city, somebody was paying the nursing home $1,800 a month for a person to stay there. And this was back in the 70s. So do the county negotiate prices or do they just pay what they have?
Can we ask those ones that are there now? So just for the, to ask the clarification, just they are really there. Is that okay with you, Tommy?
I don't care. Isn't that?
Okay, well, go ahead, Pat.
Okay, I, I can't speak to what the 70s, what happened in the 70s, but we do not do any of that. Medicaid provides services to nursing homes and that is federal dollars. So we can't, now, we do have nursing home advisory boards. And, and now we do have some problems with nursing homes because I'm trying to, right now, working with some. And we also have a, a service for vulnerable adults, adults that people think are vulnerable. They're being taken advantage of. And that's sometimes happening in nursing homes. And I'm working with one now, Alamo Road, that's a problem. So, but I, we don't do that. Okay, so I would just.
It doesn't require two answers.
We don't have to have. Thank you, thank you, Tommy.
Thank you, Tommy.
Masista. Yeah, my question should be directed to those on county board already?
Could you stand up, come a little closer?
I said I want to direct my question to those. Is Mr.?
No, I'm not. Trying to get on the board.
Lee. Lee.
So I just want to get a peek of what you do every day. So in the morning, when you come, you send a daily report that's compounded that issue, the status of every point in the county.
That's a great question.
That should be at six o'clock that morning. Do you get that?
That's a great question.
So if you do, how many homeless people did we have up to six o'clock? Small, if you know. I know those who sleep on the bench, the parks or?
The county does a point and time analysis that I think happens annually or maybe twice a year. And so we don't get a daily update. We don't get a daily count of how many unsheltered individuals there are in Mecklenburg County. So that's the short answer to your question. But if you're, if you're asking like what happens in the day in the life of a county commissioner, was that the other part of your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, one of the great things about this role is that it is what you make it. There, there's probably a very wide range. And I guess I, I won't comment on, on others, but for myself, you know, each of us are appointed to various boards and committees. So I serve on economic development. So I'm helping to try to bring job opportunities to Mecklenburg County. I'm on the environmental stewardship committee. So again, working hard to ensure we have clean water and clean air and, and equity in our environmental investments. I serve on the, the board for the mental health services. That's very important to me. Party time? Oh, gosh, okay, party time. I'll have to tell you more later.
You know, what do we, what do I do? I often get calls at 12:30. After I go to sleep, 12:30 in the morning, I get calls at 5:00 in the morning. I always take them because usually there's a crisis. Somebody's in big trouble. I, I take each day as it comes. And I, I go to court a lot with people and I go deep into the issues. And there are some families that I have followed for a decade because I see the ups and downs and that helps me better understand. I talked yesterday to a man who I've known for 15 years, who had been in prison for 20. And he's disabled and he's having problems. Sometimes a few years ago, he was doing fine, but now he's got a problem, so he calls me. So, but that helps me understand the challenges that people have. And I do not go to the government center or to the office. I do not do that. So, but I, I So, but I, I talk to people and I run out of time a lot. No, it's not every month.
No, it's not. I just wanted to remind people that we're sort of focusing, and rightly so, on folk who are on benches and outside. But there are a lot of people who are homeless that are shacking up with friends or family because they can't afford their rent. And we really have to do what we can do to try to address homelessness across the board. I just wanted to remind us that not just the folk who are on the bench, but also people who don't have a permanent residence, they call theirs.
Can I? Can I ask you?
We're going to go on. Nancy has a question. Nancy.
You all have talked eloquently about communication and problem solving. You talk about nonprofits, levels of government, faith-based. You've not talked about for-profit corporations. We used to be known for collaborating with the for-profit people, volunteers, money, ideas, insight. Why are we not talking about them? What's the problem?
I mean, I'll certainly take that on, particularly relates to education, relates to job training. Let's talk about workforce development and upward mobility. It's many incentives that we give to corporations. We ought to have goal and handcuffs to subject to them that, hey, if you go through our, the county's workforce development program, these folks should get first dibs on those living wage jobs that you bring into the... In 2017, which was the last time the county did a pulse report, it indicated that we were in migrating our talent to these corporations. So, certainly, I'd be reaching out to these corporations in a partnership way. Not, we are data rich, but we don't, we don't use that data to inform our relationships with the corporate community. So, I, I think we're in the best, best of places I can remember in decades with at least corporates mimicking that they want to help us. We just need to come up with a, 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 a strategy, a compelling strategy that ties them into the upward mobility of all of our citizens, not just those at the top, but certainly those at the bottom.
Yes. Thank you for this question. So, from my understanding, it is only 6% to 8% that corporation contribute into the Mecklenburg County overall budget, which is $2.1 billion. And everything else is coming from property taxes and from our personal taxes. And with, in the relations of a previous question on homeless, I can just operate with the numbers from WBTV that reported on a project out for worker Laura Gorecki, that the homeless population is steadily increasing in Charlotte Mecklenburg area. And it's currently estimated approximately in 2,700, which is probably, actual number is double. And the main reason that she is saying probably, economy, housing prices that are growing are contributing to it. So, our property taxes may be up, and that will create more homeless people. That's my personal concern, property taxes and maintaining them at least revenue neutral.
Yeah, I think that's a, a great suggestion. And there is a tremendous appetite in the corporate sector to get involved, particularly in education. Particularly, the high-tech corporations are willing to sponsor STEM in our local grade schools and our high schools to create the manpower, the horsepower that we're going to need to continue to lead these organizations and work for these organizations going forward. So, that's a fantastic idea. I don't know why none of us had, had mentioned that. But it is certainly a, a very powerful tool that's at our disposal. And I know, having just come from that world, we were always looking for opportunities to get involved.
Thank you. You know, we have less control over for-profits. You know, they make their own decisions. But we do have a bully pulpit. And we can and should use it to remind them that they are members of this community and that they have a moral obligation to, to lift up this community and to use their breadth and depth to help all sectors of Mecklenburg County thrive. We have some great examples of that kind of partnership. For example, you know, when we give economic incentives to businesses to come to Mecklenburg County, we don't approve projects anymore where people aren't good corporate stewards. Like, if they don't provide good insurance to their employees, if they don't pay a good living wage, if they aren't paying above the average for that, that role, we don't incentivize them. And one that really comes to mind is when we made the decision to partner to bring the med school that's going to be built in Mecklenburg County. They are going to help fund an incredible STEM program and pre-med program at JCSU. And that's the kind of thing we need to do more of. Sorry.
Thank you. This is complicated. Corporations are complicated. Sometimes corporations give money because they're in trouble. They're looking for friends. Rhymes with Tell's Margot.
Yeah.
When they had a problem, they're looking, and that's fine. That is fine. We welcome companies that are having public relations problems. Because they usually, oh, nevermind. I have harped on some companies, Duke, including Duke Energy was one. There was a big story about me and Duke Energy harping on them some years ago. And I...
Take me away next time.
I harped, I harped on, starting when I was running for county commission on Atrium for not hiring people with records as the biggest employer. It's something I ask all the time. And I'm proud to say that it took 10 years, but they have, are doing it in an organized way. And I am so proud of that. But we have, we have to have expectations of them. And we have to have expectations of time. And I guess I don't because I'm always... I'm sorry.
Our next person goes for Winston.
Just to kind of piggyback off Ms. Nancy's question. So, I was never a great student in high school. And I learned later that it wasn't that I, I didn't like learning, I just didn't like lecture. So, to sit there and have somebody talk to me.
Right.
You know? However, it seems like the response systemically would be, especially me being with a, a black guy, throw them in an HVAC program, or throw them in an automatic, which is fine, which is well. However, with the industry being, with Charlotte being the third largest banking center in the nation, how can we utilize the, the talent that might not be seen in schools to create pathways for students to work within the industry that is prevalent in our city?
Okay, Winston.
Well, clearly, I think we need to do a better job in, in creating pathways leading from our schools into industry. One example, we have a phenomenal program with Tesla at Central Piedmont Community College. Unfortunately, Tesla has, has an assessment program that weeds out a lot of kids because they can't read or do math at a certain level. But if you do get through that gauntlet of assessment, you certainly are eligible for making $42 an hour. What we have to do is come back and retool the process of making sure, whatever hurdles there has to be, that youngsters can't get over those hurdles, that we provide the support for those youngsters and their families to get over those hurdles so that they can utilize and be awarded some of those $42 an hour jobs.
Heights.
That works with Duke Energy right now, has a program at Central Piedmont. But they too also have an assessment program. And if you get through that assessment program, working on these lines, climbing up poles and stuff, in three years, they say you make $75,000, and you could go up from there. So, the opportunities are here. What we have to do is think systemically and prepare our youngsters to be successful in getting into those jobs so that they can earn a living wage. We can do it, but we have to be more intentional about what we do.
Okay.
Thank you. I love this question. Our goal for our residents is economic independence and upward mobility. So, whether you go that, take that through a traditional, you know, K-12 pathway and, you know, schooling afterwards, or whether you go a different way, it's our job to ensure our residents can succeed. You know, if you need something done on your home, you can just get in line because there's, you know, six-month wait for all of the, the kinds of skilled services. And, and those pay a really good wage. And yet, it's hard to find out where to get trained for that. And it's hard to get a scholarship for that. I don't think the county has done enough to make the connection between industry and our employees clear enough. It, it's not there yet. And I've been talking about this for my entire first term. And if it takes me eight more years to finally get to my goal, I'm going to keep at it because to me, this is the key to everything. We have to help people earn more money and improve household wealth so that they can buy housing, get healthcare, and the rest. Thank you.
We need, this is one of those things we need more communication about. It would be one, you know, the media also is, has shortages. But it would be great if the media focused on highlighting company, are you listening? The companies that are doing, that have mentors, that have mentorships available. And we could all celebrate those companies and be proud out loud because there are companies that, you know, that do have mentorships. And, and that makes a big difference to, you know, a high school kid, a college kid. You know, that makes great. And, and we need, but do you know who's doing it and who's not? We need to find out, and we need to brag about them. Are you ready, Patty? Okay. But, but certainly, the county can do more also. And the bully puppet, the leader of our, of, you know, the mayor and our chairman, I would hope that they would push that. But, you know, when, because they are out in the community more with the corporate world than, than we are.
Well, Ross first, then.
Oh, yes, sure.
They would want to take Ms. Reese's question.
So, one of the shames of, of the scenario you, you laid out, Winston, was that I heard from you that you're a guy who learns by doing, right? You, you're not a lecture guy. You, you would have made a fabulous engineer, right? That, that's what engineers do. They like getting in, tearing things apart, figuring out how they work, and rebuilding them. Not so much a, a lecture guy. There are programs. I think we've already had some folks talk about mentorships. Junior Achievement is a great program where we identify folks in schools who, who have a mindset for business, or engineering, or science. And we get them involved early on in the field itself. And a lot of folks go on to become business owners. And you did mention HVAC. But HVAC's a fabulous career right now. Quite frankly, if you can learn to be an HVAC technician, in three years, you can hang your own shingle and you'll have your own HVAC business. So, there are opportunities, and we need to do a better job of tailoring the education system for the learner.
So, with continuation of what Ross said, and from my point of view as a teacher, because I taught at all the levels in elementary, middle schools, and in the university, there are no bad students. There are no not talented students, absolutely not. They all are talented. You just have to find your approach. And with what you said resonates with me very much because my youngest son was just exactly... Mom, I already, I do not want to listen to them. I already got everything that they say in first five minutes. I'm bored. So, and that is a very interesting phenomenon. And there are, should be reinforced programs for talented students. And talented students are not just those that can resolve the equation in math in professors and somebody else, but those that think differently, that approach differently. And I would go back to middle and high schools and defining the talented children. And there's one more thing that will be adjacent to it. 30% of those that are in prison are talented children. Thank you.
This is a question to Commissioner Alvin, Commissioner Cawtham, and of course, potential commissioner. How do you plan to better communicate with communities what you're doing? The different communities in, in the county?
Hey, Ms. Alvin. Lee.
Well, you know, I think that it's, it, it, it's so important, as I've said, that I bring the county out to the community. That is my burden. That is my duty. And that is why I do produce a sort of summary of what's happening in the county. It, it goes out somewhere between one and four times a month, depending on what, you know, what all is going on. And that's, that's a big commitment on my part. But I think it's very important because I can reach a lot of people with, with that versus trying to make phone calls and, and, you know. So, I think that's an important tool. And I would love it if partners in the community, if you are, you know, have access to a neighborhood association list, or a faith community list, if that can be forwarded, because that helps, helps to get the, the word out. You know, there's certainly social media, but a lot of people don't access that. But I certainly communicate there as well and just try to be out in the community as much as possible across not only the city of Charlotte, but Pinaltong, Matthews-Menthill, Cornelius-Davidson, and...
Huntersville.
Huntersville. So, yes, so thank you.
I have worked on this for years to, and I find it's, instead of me sitting, I'm going to do this, I talk to the people. And I'm like, what can I do better to get information out like this? And I kind of follow their lead. And that has helped. And they've introduced me to different groups and where I've been able to get information. You know, a lot of times, though, individuals in the county, they might only want in, they only want to talk about this, or they that. They don't want to, they're not interested in a broad spectrum of everything we're doing because it doesn't affect their lives. And maybe they're interested in healthcare, or children in schools, or veterans, or, or whatever. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, if we can get more commissioners talking about communicating, communication, I think we could do a better job from the county to get information out to all sectors of the people. And, and I think that would help. But, you know, I, I, so far, I mean, the people seem to be okay with me. And I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing. And I try to get better every day in talking to people. And with COVID, you know, in a different situation now, it makes it a little easier.
I'm a, I'm sort of an old retail politician where I like to go out to communities and talk to people in different sectors. Certainly with technology, you're going to use your, your technology to reach folks. But back in the old days, I used to work with the city. And people get water bills. There's information in their water bills for any type of communications and Nancy, addressing, working with the corporate community, any type of billing to try to encourage the corporate community to join us, to share information with people who are receiving those statements, as well as having town hall meetings. And, and really going into neighborhoods, going into neighborhoods that people often don't, don't want to go into those neighborhoods. But to make sure that people are aware of the services and opportunities, and really not so much preaching at people, but engaging and having a communication so that we can take that data and convert it into information that's usable to improve the quality of life for those, for those residents.
Thank you.
All right, we got, we have to be out of this room by 10. So, we have three more questions from Kiva, young lady in a pink shirt, and then Sean. If you could, please keep your questions to 30 seconds apiece. And if you have a specific person that you would like to answer, please address them.
See if I can apply by that. The county is currently embarking on an environmental justice, community engagement series. I am wondering, I am already familiar with the work of Commissioners Alvin and Cawtham. I'd like to hear from the candidates. One question. Okay. Outside of that community engagement session, what items in your platforms speak to environmental justice? And as a part of that community engagement plan, which, sorry, community engagement sessions that will feed and inform the environmental justice plan for the county, what specific measurables or criteria would you encourage or advocate to be adopted into that plan? So, I guess that's two questions, I'm sorry, specifically for the candidates. What items in your platform speak to environmental justice issues? And what deliverables, criteria, or measurables would you like to see included in the environmental justice plan that the county will soon adopt?
So, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. So, I, I would ask to make sure that we're not talking past each other. When you say environmental justice, what, what are you talking about? What do you mean?
Environmental justice as it pertains to land use and development, environmental justice as it pertains to air quality. environmental justice as it pertains to air quality, environmental justice as it pertains to water quality. What is in your platform that speaks to those issues?
Right, so, so what's in my platform? If you, if you, if you look at it, I talk about being a common sense, business best practice-driven, results-focused servant leader. So, in my mind, what that means as it pertains to what, what you just talked about is applying the same rigor we do in manufacturing in the environment. So, we've got certain standards about emissions. We have certain standards about land usage. We need to make sure that we are broadcasting those metrics and we're holding ourselves accountable, again, going back to that vision of the report card over our heads. So, what is the standard that we've committed to meet? And how are we doing on meeting it? And then it, it gets back to communication so that the voters can hold us accountable.
Mine would be, again, platform dealing, access to quality healthcare. When you look at the pollution on the west side with I-85 and I-77 come together and major thoroughfares, and you look at the health condition of asthma for a lot of those kids, look at those zones. A metric I would use would be a reduction in some of those health problems related to just the air that they breathe each and every, every day. There are a lot of things we do in terms of, of, of land use. I'm not as, as up, as, as you might be. But where there's water runoff and stuff in terms of red clay and the particulars that are related to red clay often occurs in low-income areas. That's why you see in some parts of the county, a lot of green grass and trees and other parts, you see a lot of red, red clay. That also adds to the health problems for many children that you don't recognize until they're a lot older. They have cognitive issues when they get into schools. So, I would be looking and using as a metric, something as simple as asthma and certain zip codes or census tracts to keep up with. Is there a reduction in the number of asthma youngsters? My time.
We got to stop right there. We're going to get these last two questions. Young lady in a shirt.
Okay, good question. Well, I'm glad Ms. Nancy mentioned the private sector. I, you all use a lot of buzzwords like mental health assistance and everything else as it pertains to the homeless population. However, in order for most people to get mental health assistance, you have to have insurance. And so, that's something that you all are not, well, what, what is your, how, how are we going to provide insurance for those in the mental health, oh, well, in the homeless population who needs mental health assistance? Yeah, because they can only, if you don't have insurance, you can only get eight sessions. I'm a mental health provider. You can only get eight sessions, period, for the entire year. And most of it is only for large corporations and most of it, nonprofits. So, what are you all going to do for, about that?
Can you ask somebody specifically for the, we have two.
Yeah, the two, this already enough.
So, oh, okay. So, what, what's your, what's your population that you focus on? Is it adults or children? You see both. Well, thank you for what you do. You know, there is nothing, in everything that I've done for Mecklenburg County, and I also say this, is having practice law for 17 years. There is nothing more complex than the work that I'm doing on the Alliance Health Board. I cannot believe the level of difficulty. You know, there's uninsured, there's Medicaid, there's underinsured. And, and so, you know, what I can tell you is that we have a, a coalition of families and providers here in Mecklenburg County who are giving us input for Alliance Health. And you might, maybe you and I could talk afterwards, because I would love to have your input there so that you can help me be the strongest possible voice to advance access for all of our residents.
And I would answer that the county does provide mental health at the, and social workers at the shelters. That's, there's no charge for. And so, that's, that's one thing that we do. We also provide, you know, nurses and mental health in the school. So, that's something that the county provides. But as for insurance, we, we can't give people insurance. But we can try to meet with them and see if they're eligible. Some people are eligible for Medicaid, but they don't know it. So, we try to push people to talk to our social workers and find out if, what resources are available. And same thing with veterans. There are services for veterans, but a lot of veterans, they, they don't have a great communication system either. And so, they don't. So, you know, we, we are making incremental, I, I think we're making, since I've been on the board, it's gotten a little better on this topic. But, you know, we still have a long way to go. But again, we need to put pressure on our legislators to pass Medicaid expansion. And, you know, our sheriff is also doing work with mental health. And he's even got a facility. Did you know? We don't talk about it as much as we should.
We want to say, you know, let's give them a hand. We appreciate you, you're a chair with us this morning. We invite you to come back to this board.
Thank you.
We are supposed to improve this room, but you all have been bombarding this place.
Okay.